Welcome to our October 27, 2025 Meeting of the City of Tuscaloosa Zoning Board of Adjustments. Any written comments sent to staff will forwarded to the Board directly. At this time, we'd like to introduce introduction of the staff and members. Chad Hobbs, Senior Associate City Attorney. Zach Pons, Director of Planning. Lynn O'Leary, Planner. I ask the Board members to introduce themselves, starting to my right.
Mary Catherine Holt.
Paul Rollins Jr.
Michelle Cooley.
Tim Gillum.
Marty Hamner.
Okay, ma'am, by virtue of the state law, the city ordinances, the purpose of the zoning Board of Adjustments is as follows. We hear appeals from zoning officer decisions, grant special exceptions to the zoning code in accordance with the terms as established by the City Council. We grant variances from the zoning code when strict enforcement creates unnecessary hardship. Circumstances that are not hardship include those that are self-inflicted, or self-created, inconvenient, and are personal. Now, the zoning Board of Adjustments does not interpret or enforce subdivision covenants or HOA rules. Now, those matters are not relevant areas of inquiry by the Board on any petition. Now, there were sign-up sheets located outside for public comment. Now, four speakers are allowed to speak in favor of a petition, and four speakers are allowed to speak in opposition of a petition. Now, all speakers will have a maximum of five minutes unless the Board votes to allow a longer time. Now, the Board will take up items in order of our final agenda. The Board will initially receive a presentation from the staff as to the details of the agenda item. Now, after the staff presentation, I will call upon the petitioner to present their case. The petitioner will have a maximum of 10 minutes unless the Board votes to allow a longer time. Now, at the conclusion of the petitioner's remarks, I will call on any party in order of the sign-up who desires to support the petition. Thereafter, I will call on any party in order of sign-up those who oppose the petition. Now, when is your turn for comment? Please introduce yourself, stating your name and address to the Board to provide any to provide your remarks. Any written comments have been included into the record, okay? Now, after receiving the remarks of those who oppose the petition, the petitioner will have the opportunity to respond to those objections. Any rebuttal will be limited to two minutes unless the Board votes to allow a longer time. Now, if the petitioner presents any new information in response to the objections, the Board will allow those who oppose the petition the opportunity to respond to the new information only. Now, any response will be limited to two minutes unless the Board votes to allow a longer time. Now, during the course of this presentation, you may be interrupted by any member of the Board for clarification or additional information. Now, such interruptions will not reduce your allowed time. Now, once the Board members are satisfied that they have received all relevant information, I will close further discussion by the public, at which time the Board members will discuss the matter and then vote. Now, after the vote, you are free to leave. These proceedings are video-recorded and broadcast live. All in-person public comment should be made at the podium into the microphone. Any party agreed by any final judgment or decision of such zoning Board of Adjustments may within 15 days thereafter appeal therewith to the Circuit Court by filing with such Board a written notice of appeal specifying the judgment or decision from which the appeal is taken. Now, do any members of the Board have any conflicts of interest as to any agenda matters? If so, please state the same for the record. Okay. I would ask the staff to confirm on the record that proper notice has been given to all parties in interest as required by law as to all matters before the Board tonight.
Yes, it has.
Okay. So, the following agenda items have been modified. ZB A dash one-on-one dash 25, Brian Winter, petitions for a special exception to allow the operation of a group home at the property located at 2212 26th Avenue, Zone MR dash one, Council District Two, is requesting to withdraw. Before we do that, we want to have them-
Requesting to continue.
Oh, continue, okay. Let me make a note of that. Continue, and I understand we have someone here that would like to speak before we take a vote?
So, we need to have a motion to move it to the portion of the agenda, the withdrawal, cases requesting to withdraw.
Okay. So, do I hear a motion and a second to move this item on the agenda to cases requesting to to be continued?
So, move.
Second.
Okay, voting, Mary Catherine?
Yes.
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 Okay, petition may be moved.
All right, and then now y'all can vote on the actual continuance of it.
Okay, so now we're going to vote. Do we want them to be able to speak to us first?
I think you should you should see if people are here to speak for or against and give them the chance to speak since they're here.
Okay. So, ZB A dash one-on-one dash 25, Brian Winter, petitions for a special exception to allow the operation of a group home at the property located at 2212 26th Avenue, Zone MR dash one. Now, we have moved it to the top to get a continuance, but is there anyone here that would like to speak on behalf before we vote about continuing it?
Good evening. I'm John Tyler, the Executive Director of Phoenix House, and we're just asking for a continuance until November ZB A meeting.
Okay. Anything else?
No, ma'am.
Okay, and Daniel Hinton, are you Daniel Hinton?
Ma'am.
Are you Daniel Hinton? You're not Daniel Hinton, so-
No, John Tyler.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Do we want to hear opposition at this time as well? Okay. So, Mr. Hinton, if you'll come up, anybody else want to speak for it, the Phoenix House?
Good afternoon. My name is Daniel Hinton. I live at 2204 26th Avenue, and that's right across the street from this property here. And I really don't know where to start from, but to say, we really don't want this in the neighborhood because this letter here, the last couple of projects that's been put in our neighborhood, we hadn't received these. Right now, we have a full-fledged greenhouse up the street from my house, and right around the corner, we have a record service coming. I took some pictures, but I couldn't get around at Walmart because their system was down, just to show y'all, but-
Well, we have a continuance, so you have November. If you want to take time and get all that together, you can bring it back in November because it's being moved to November, okay?
Yes, ma'am.
So, you have time to get things together and have, you know, anyone come with you, okay?
Yes, ma'am. I thank y'all.
Thank you. Anyone else like to have a say on this petition? If you would, come up and give us your name. This petition is being continued and moved to November.
I'm Loretta Griffin, Representative for the Church, address is 1912 26th Avenue. My address, church address is 2104 26th Avenue. And these, so question that came to mind for the church as well as the neighborhood, it's not the best location for the group home. It's not, there's a lot of noise down from 26th Avenue. The interstate goes 359 going to I-59. It's just not enough space for three bedrooms, kitchen, dining area, sitting room, smoking area, and sitting room outside the group home. How many staff would there be? And where would they park? How many would be for each shift? Day shift, evening shift, night shift? And what would they be engaged in during the day or night? Delivery trucks, where they're going to park? Businesses coming to visit, where would they park? What visiting hours? How long they would be? How many handicap parts they're going to have? What would be going on during the weekend as we do have service on Sunday?
Ma'am-
As well on Tuesday.
So, I hear what you're saying, and you have very valid questions, but at this time, they're not presenting to us, so to get the answers to those, we'll have them in November when they actually come back and present, so we are continuing this. So, if you want to seek those answers, or if you want to come back, we wanted to give you an opportunity to express your opposition and have it on record.
Signatures.
Okay.
Someone hold it.
Does she need to turn that in now, or can she?
You can hold it until November if you plan on coming back.
In November?
Yes, ma'am.
It just gives you more time to get things together and come back, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you so much for being here this evening. Yes, ma'am. Okay, so at this time, we're going to close public comment, and we're going to vote on continuing Brian Winter's petitions for a special exception to allow the operation of a group home at the property located at 2212 26th Avenue, Zone MR dash one, Council District Two. Voting to my right?
Yes.
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 Yes, yes.
Petition is continued.
Board, we do have one more case requesting to continue. Hassan Gay petitions for a special exception to allow the operation of a tent-sheltered retail establishment at the property located at 2002 Greensboro Avenue, Zone GC, Council District Two. This case was continued by staff. We're working with the applicant to collect more information to next month.
Okay, sounds good.
Can we get a vote on that, please, Commission, Board?
So, we need to vote?
Yes, please.
Okay, do we need a motion and a second? I need a motion?
So, move.
Second.
All right, voting to the right?
Yes.
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 Yes, yes.
All right, continue.
All right, Board, moving on to our first two cases tonight. These cases are essentially the same, just on different properties, so I'm going to present them together for you tonight. ZB A 9825, Leah Alexander, petitions for a variance from the setback requirements to construct an attached garage on the property located at 3016 Fourth Street East, Zone SFR one, Council District Five. Here we have the zoning of that property. As you can see, it's located northwest of the gateway in Alberta. And here we have an aerial view of that first property. And as you can see, that property is currently vacant right now. As part of their request, they're asking for a variance from the residential setback regulations to construct an attached carport. The proposed carport will be located no closer than five feet from the property line within the side setback. So, here we have a site plan of that property. You can see the carport over to the right. As it stands right now, because this is an attached carport, it would be required to meet the 10-foot side setback requirement for SFR one. If this were a detached carport, it would be considered an accessory structure, and it could be located no closer than five feet from the property line. Because it's currently attached, it would need to meet that 10-foot side setback, which you can see that it crosses. In the old zoning ordinance, we did have an allowance for an attached carport to be located within five feet of the property line, and we do have plans to make that change in the current ordinance, but as it stands right now today, that would be required to meet that 10-foot side setback. So, here we have some elevations of that property showing what it looked like in the And then, as you can see in these regulations, they do have a 10-foot minimum side setback for SFR one. So, I'll go ahead and run through the next one. ZB A 9925, Leah Alexander, petitions for a variance from the setback requirements to construct an attached garage on the property located at 3020 Fourth Street East, Zone SFR one, Council District Five. This is in a similar location, just one lot over. And you can see that lot there. And this lot is also currently vacant. This is the same request as the last one, variance from the residential setback regulations to construct a carport no closer than five feet from this property line. Here's that site plan, very similar to the last one. You can see how far away they are from that property line, and they are within that 10-foot setback that's required for SFR one. And elevation's again very similar to the last one. And the requirements for the setbacks there. We did receive one public comment in opposition to this request. We do have the applicant representative here in person. I would ask that you issue two votes for these. Do you have any questions for staff?
So, when is the new ordinance supposed to come out? We're changing it back.
Mr. Pons?
Yeah, so we are bringing a code update to Planning and Zoning Commission. It'll be heard November 17th, then it has to go to City Council. So, ultimately, it's about a two-month-long process, maybe a little bit longer. January 6th is what we're is the timeframe. Part of those updates includes the five-foot setback for carports if they're attached. However, right now, you know, and and Council could not approve that as well. That could be a possibility.
So, either way, it's not a hardship, really. It's just a desire to have it be there where it is. It could be put somewhere else on the property, right? It could go in the back or-
If it were detached from the property, it could be located where it currently is shown on the site plans.
And detached is just a little bit of little daylight between. It doesn't have to be a certain amount of time.
That's correct.
Okay. All right.
So, prior to the current zoning, it was five feet.
That's correct.
It was changed to 10, and we're proposing that it changes back to five?
Well, to clarify, the previous ordinance allowed carports to be attached, like an attached carport, to be able to be five feet from a property line? And so, in a situation where someone has that, they come and they want to, you know, enclose that and make it living space, they would have to request a variance because it then would not be a carport. So, it's specific to carports, attached carports, and the five-foot setback in the previous code.
So, this construction, is this going to be a carport or a living space?
It's a carport, yeah.
Not a garage, it's-
Correct, it will be open, and I'll let the applicant confirm the details on that.
All right, any more questions for staff? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Leah Alexander?
Good evening, everyone. I'm Leah Alexander, 5520 Tenth Court East, North Port, Alabama, representing the owner in these two projects. As we mentioned, we are petitioning to request a variance regarding these attached carports so that we can hopefully, let's see if I can set this down, attach the carport to the structure so that it can be located within five feet to the property line. In our conversations with staff, they mentioned that this is intended to be added back to the code as it was taken out in framework. It was not a removal, that was an intended removal from the code as it was in there previously, and that's why we're requesting that it be added back, and that's why we're requesting a variance today so that we can attach the carport. And it allows us, in this instance, to be able to do a double carport in this particular situation. For it to be a detached structure, it wouldn't allow for a double in this particular situation.
What's your dimensions of your carport?
I believe it is, I'm trying to go on memory, it's like around 20-foot deep, and then we've got the minimum nine-foot-wide parking structures, but we've got some added width because of the depth of the steps coming out of the the door there, so I think we've got 12, maybe 22 width or something like that to give room to get out of the car so that there's room for double cars, something like that.
Any other questions for Ms. Alexander?
Since this is a variance, I have one question for the petitioner, one question for City Staff. So, for the petitioner, what would be your hardship? And for the City Staff, if we can't find a hardship, instead of us voting on it, can she just continue till, well, she won't have to continue till January if it's going to be changed automatically, right?
The hard, we feel the hardship is that we would have to wait until January, thinking that this is going to be changed, so the developer is unable to proceed with the project because this, in terms of City Staff, they're planning to move forward in November to present to Council, and then having to wait until the this, the Council actually approves, but planning and zoning in November. I guess the hardship is that they're, the project is unable to move forward in waiting until this is approved.
Could you not have separated carport?
Attaching to the house allows to to give full coverage from wind and rain. It gives a better closure from the elements.
So, what we have here is that it was changed, and they have plans to change it back, but as it stands right now, I'm not seeing the hardship that, so say Council decides not to change it. That puts us back in the position of what is the hardship, because you have options, like the delaying of it is financial, meaning it's, the developer can't start because he's waiting, so that's a financial thing. He wants to go ahead and start, it's inconvenient, so that's not a hardship inconvenience. Leaving a little bit of daylight, that's not a hardship. You mean, there's some different options, and so I'm trying to see where the- Anybody?
Well, the the change in the code, the lot existed prior to the code, and he was allowed to do an attached carport that he could place within 10 feet of the property line prior to framework, and then after framework, that was taken out inadvertently, I think, without meaning to, and now the lot does not allow him to build that carport within five feet to the property line. So, his lot was rendered, the buildable nature of that lot, as a result of framework, his lot was, the ability to build this plan, by nature of framework, it was rendered, that the nature of being able to build this plan was rendered invalid due to framework, but I think it was rendered unknowingly or inadvertently, and I think that the new code update is they're trying to correct things like errors in spelling and other things that were changed in the code that they didn't realize that got changed, and that's part of the desire to implement this addition to planning and zoning, and correct me if I'm wrong in any way. But there's no guarantee, I guess, that the Council is going to approve every one, but I don't know if they're going to take them line by line. Zach, will it be an approval of all of them, or will they, how will they do that?
Yeah, I'll present it, and then they will probably look at it section by section, and if they don't like something, they would remove it or something like that. So, it could be all, it could be nothing, it could be piece by piece in the way that they approve it.
Does the builder or owner have owned the center lot between these two properties?
He does not.
He does not?
His, that's my understanding, that he does not own the center lot. Is that correct? Are y'all able to see that? I don't think he owns the center lot.
There was a picture that showed the two with the-
That's right. He does not own that lot, or the owner of the other two does not own the middle lot.
Thank you.
Has there been any opposition to this?
We did have one public comment in opposition.
Was it from the lot owner in between, or do you know?
I believe it was from an adjacent lot to the to the east of the these lots.
Yeah, you can see, you have it in front of you, and it was emailed to you earlier. It looks like there might have been some misunderstanding of it being a rezoning request rather than a variance request as you look at the the comments.
So, so the initial change from five feet to 10 feet, what was the reason, or was it just oversight?
I don't think it was, I can't speak to if it was intentional or not. I don't quite recall exactly, but we are proposing to put it back in because we do feel like it was a regulation that was appropriate in the past and would be appropriate in the future.
I mean, is there, in order to get a carport in this lot line, I mean, the only other option would be detaching it, I mean, based off the other setbacks. I mean, I don't see the back, but I mean, I don't, just looking at the overall 127, unless you can help me, I'm not seeing where they, this is the only place to put it on the lot?
Well, this is brand-new construction, so the house could be reimagined, the primary structure could be reimagined also, and that's where I guess I'm having a little bit of hesitation, is that if this is, the primary structure was existing, and we were just talking about a carport, that's one condition, but with the primary structure being new construction also, all of this could be designed to fit within the current regulations, the current setback.
Because you're only talking a couple of feet here.
Yeah.
Seven, it's three feet.
So, I'll read you guys your decision-making standards for a variance, and maybe it'll help you make a decision or be able to make a decision. So, a variance may be approved only on finding the applicant demonstrates all of the following. There are extraordinary and exceptional conditions pertaining to the particular piece of property. Those conditions are peculiar to the property and do not generally apply to other property in the vicinity. Those conditions are not the result of the landowners or applicants' own actions. Because of those conditions, the application of the standards in this ordinance to the particular piece of property would result in unnecessary hardship to the applicant, and the variance is the minimum necessary, or minimum necessary to alleviate that hardship and is consistent with the public interest and with the spirit, purpose, and intent of this ordinance, such that public safety is secured and substantial justice is achieved.
Well, thank you there. Well, thank you for sharing. I do understand what you're saying, and I defer to my counsel. See, Chad, you want to weigh in on this and your thoughts and the spirit of the ordinance?
The, I'll try not to wander too too far on this one. So, you know, the purpose of the of the setback rule, the 10-foot-
10-foot setback, right.
The purpose of the setback rule is to make sure that someone is not constructing a living space too close to someone else's property because of the the problems that are attended to that. I think the problem, or the the reason that we had in the prior code, the allowance for carports specifically, was, as Zach mentioned earlier, that's not living space. You know, an open carport would be subject just to the five-foot setback rule rather than the primary structure of setback footprint because it would not, the carport would not be treated as as living space. The, and I think that's why the planning staff are going back to the Council to have that, to try to ask the Council to put that back in, that one specific allowance back in.
So, will we say that the ordinance is making the hardship for them?
That's the next thing that I was going to address. According to what Ms. Alexander said, the property owner, I assume the property owner has had owned the property prior to January 1 of 2025?
Yes.
The, so there has been a change in law that has changed what he could, I say he, I don't know who the owner is, but there's been a change in the law that has changed what the owner is able to do with the property, and the the Board can can look at that and determine whether that's considered a hardship, or whether you want, you feel that that rises to the level-
But that's happened in a lot of scenarios where it has changed, and even though you had the property, it can be, you might not be able to do what you wanted to do with it because you, we had that before where somebody came in and they, it changed, and they couldn't do because it changed, and so-
We had it last month with the sign regulation.
Exactly, so-
That's right.
I mean, we, if we get into this, I feel like, you know, that's my concern, is that if we get into, because the ordinance changed and you owned the property prior to the ordinance, whether it's going to change again or not, that's like the sign people, they can come back and go, well, we had the property, and then the sign law changed, and now we want to do something different. So, that's the concern. I see, you know, the potential there, but just want to make sure that if we, are we opening ourselves up for Pandora's Box here, you know?
Well, and and because the next, the next point, and I'll say, I think this is a is a is a difficult case because there there are considerations that that weigh on on both sides of it. The next thing that I was going to say is that, you know, the third of of the- you know, the third of the criteria that Mr. Pons read a couple of minutes ago is that the conditions... Or, excuse me. Excuse me, the second of the criteria. I got out of order in my reading. But the second of the criteria is that the conditions are peculiar to the property and do not generally apply to other property in the vicinity. Because of the nature of this, and it's a change in the rule, it does apply to all properties. You know, anyone in the same zoning district or any other zoning district that was building new construction would confront this same issue. And so that, you know, that's something that would weigh back against the granting of the variance. I think this is one that would be in the board's broad discretion in terms of which way you go on it.
Now, Chad, there's existing homes that look like maybe built in the 40s that probably are past... They're within five instead of 10.
I would...
Based on an aerial view.
I don't know for sure one way or the other, but I would imagine if you looked in the neighborhood, you would find numerous and multiple carports that, you know, were built outside of that 10-foot footprint and get to the five-foot setback.
So it's common to the neighborhood potentially as a rationale. My concern about asking about who owns the middle lot is that person being impinged upon because now they're thinking they bought it and they got 10. And they've bought it, and they've only got five on each side of themselves. So I don't know the owner's intention or who it is, but that would be a concern.
All right. Ms. Alexander, anything else to share with us?
I think so.
Thank you so much for your time. Is there anybody that'd like to speak for or against this petition? For this petition in the audience? No one's signed up. Is there anybody like to speak in opposition of this petition? Okay, at this time, we'll close public comment. I'll go to board comment, starting with Mary Catherine Holt.
All right, for all the reasons that we've been discussing, this is a little bit of a tricky one with the previous setbacks versus the current setback requirements. But because this is new construction and because we don't know yet if the council is going to approve changing the setbacks, at this time, I don't see the hardship to grant either of these variances.
I agree as well. I don't see the hardship in this situation to be able to grant these variances.
Yeah, they read it to us very clearly. We asked our council about it. And this is one of the situations that I feel like we're opening a door if we... You know, Marty made a good point about the middle lot and what we're doing to that person's property. And then we're opening up all these on something that's not built already. That's the biggest thing, that we have some time to wave and see. Or I just don't see a hardship right here.
Yeah, I'm going to agree with the board members. I'm not seeing the hardship. I was, you know, hoping maybe if they own the middle lot, there may... Could be a way to work around it. But being that not on to that and not knowing what council's going to do in January, I'm not going to be in favor. I agree with my former... I mean, my current board members. I do think the city staff is saying they're going to be supportive of this change, but it is not voted on at this point, so it's not a real thing. I feel we're a little bit hand-tied with this one because we're following what the variance hardships are, and there's not really hardship when you haven't built it.
Okay, at this time, we'll close board comment. We're going to vote on these separate. I'll read the first one. ZBA-98-25, Lee Alexander petitions for a variance from the setback requirements to construct an attached garage on the property located at 3016 Fourth Street East, Zone SFR-1, Council District 5. Voting with Ms. Holt?
No.
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 No. No.
Petition failed. Next petition, ZBA-99-25, Lee Alexander petitions for a variance from the setback requirements to construct an attached garage on the property located at 3016 Fourth Avenue East, Zone SFR-1, Council District 5. Voting with Ms. Holt?
No.
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 No. No.
Petition failed.
All right, moving on to our next case tonight. ZBA 125, Wiley Petty, petitions for a variance from the accessory structure standards to construct a metal accessory structure on the property located at 3709 65th Avenue, Council District 1. Here we have an aerial view of the property with its zoning. This is just east of... Excuse me, just west of Joe Malacham and Foster Ferry intersection. And aerial view of the property. Here we have view of that property from the street and the rear yard where that accessory structure will be placed. As part of their request, they're requesting a variance from the accessory structure regulations to allow the construction of a metal-clad accessory structure. The proposed structure will be 720 square feet. The petitioner states that they require a metal structure due to frequent flooding on their property. Here we have a site plan of the accessory structure. You can see it's going to go in that back corner. And here we have some drawings of what that structure will look like. And here are applicable regulations for accessory structures. As you can see, Section 25106 states that no accessory structure exceeding 120 square feet should be clad in aluminum or other sheet metal. We did not receive any public comment. We do have the applicant in here in person. Do you have any questions for staff?
No, sir, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Petty?
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name's Wiley Petty. I live at 3709 65th Avenue, Tuscaloosa, Alabama 35401. On June 16th, we had a storm. I had a metal building in the back. And my building got destroyed. Also, one of my vehicle got damaged. So I didn't know about the new ordinance. So... And I came up to ask to get a building permit. And that's when I found out I couldn't have another metal building put back. But that zone has flood area. And water stands in our backyard. When the rain real hot, the water stands about halfway in my backyard. So if we put the metal back there, I feel like that'd be the best. I'm asking for... That's my hardship because the water stands back there.
Any questions for Mr. Petty?
Is this a prefabricated building? Or is it something you're building on site?
No, prefabricated.
It's prefabricated?
Yeah.
Have you already purchased the building?
Well, I had gone purchase. I still got it ordered.
Got it ordered.
But I told them, you know, I got them to hold up on it because once I found out that it could be a metal, so I didn't want them to bring it out there and then I'd be messed up then, you know? So...
Does the vendor have any options where you could take this internal structure and then clad it in vinyl?
Excuse me?
Does the vendor have an option to clad it in exterior vinyl, something of that nature? You've still got a steel interior building. Exterior would match the code?
Yeah, but the building is metal itself. I got it from a steel company, you know?
But you can't change the outside? Is there not an option to change that and not be metal, but be like vinyl siding or something on it?
Oh, not with that company.
So a question to staff. He could get another... It just can't be metal. It can be any other certain type of material it can be.
That's correct. He could surface it with a different material, but it cannot be metal.
So...
Yeah, I'm sorry. He said I could do it with any kind of material that I could put like siding over the metal building?
Is that what you're saying? That they can do vinyl siding over the metal?
They could, and it would be acceptable.
Yeah, so you have some options that you can do. You just can't have the metal exterior, but you can put something else over that, some siding. And the staff will be happy to get with you and walk him through what you can do in terms... Because you just can't have the metal.
Okay. All right, thanks anyway.
He said thanks.
There may be a different vendor that has maybe... I know you don't want wood, but they may have metal interior structure, and you could put any type of siding on the outside, a hardy board, anything, cedar, whatever you want.
Yeah, but my thing, the purpose, have a metal building and then put the siding, you know? I mean...
Well, it's... And it's... If I'm... The metal, is it safe in terms of something happens?
Yeah, that's what I want to know.
You know, you have that type of building. It's almost like having a mobile home that can, you know...
Yeah, I think the aluminum or... Yeah, aluminum or other sheet metal siding is more of like an aesthetic-type thing in neighborhoods. That is why it's probably in the code.
So there are... So when we talk about a hardship, you got to have a reason other than just preference, financial, or anything like that. So you have some options of what you can do and still do what you want in, on your property.
Yeah, I understand. But I was just saying, because of the water standing back there, you know, there would have been a better product. That's what I'm saying.
So the petitioner mentioned the flooding. Is there anywhere that we can check to see if that's in a flood zone? Or...
We do not have a record of it being a female registered flood zone.
We hooked up with Roy Van. Roy Van, that's the zone, the flood zone. And we was in this flood zone too, Rapp Street.
Is that a part of the... Was it Noah's Ark project or something like that?
Okay. Anything else, Mr. Petty?
No, that's it.
Thank you so much for your time, okay?
Thank you.
We don't have anybody signed up to speak for or against this petition. Is there anybody in the audience that'd like to speak for this petition? Is there anybody like to speak against this petition? At this time, we'll close public comment and go to board comment. Ms. Holt?
So I think that our regulations are pretty clear on the material that should be used on any accessory structure over 120 feet. And so for that reason, I feel like I'm not in favor of granting this variance. I also feel like as far as the hardship of the flooding, that's probably something that you should address with grading or something else rather than the materiality of the structure. So for that reason, I'm not in favor of the variance.
If it was somewhere that we could confirm or verify the flooding aspect of it, I would... I can see that as a hardship, especially having wood as opposed to a metal building and standing water. But the petitioner can do a metal building just if he covers it with something else, right? So whether it's a different material or if it's sprayed vinyl or something like that, right? Or wrapped or something like that, they'll be fine. Okay.
I do understand, Mr. Petty, about the flood, the water standing in your backyard and that being an issue. And like my fellow board member said, that's probably grading needs to be checked on or looked at. You do have options. You can do the metal building, but it has to have the out, the exterior of it has to be covered in some other way. So you have an option. So with that being said, I would not be in favor of approving this.
Yeah, I'm not going to be in favor either on this one. I mean, there's other options for materials. And there isn't plenty of options out there for materials that, you know, withstand water. So I'm not going to be in favor either.
Agreed with my fellow board members.
Okay. At this time, we'll close board comment, and I'll read the petition. ZBA-100-25, Wiley Petty, petitions for a variance from the accessory structure standards to construct a metal accessory structure on the property located at 3709 65th Avenue, Council District 1. Voting with Ms. Holt?
No.
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 No. No.
Petition failed. Staff will get with you, Mr. Petty, and further talk about it, okay?
All right, moving on to our next case tonight. ZBA 102-25, Ginger Contos, petitions for a special exception to allow the operation of a liquor store at the property located at 589 Lurleen B. Wallace Boulevard North, Zone Downtown, Council District 4. Here we have the zoning of that property. As you can see, it's directly behind Tom Beckby along Lurleen Wallace. And here we have an aerial view of the property and a view of that property from the street. So as part of this request, they'll be requesting a special exception to operate a liquor store. The petitioner states that the business will engage in the sale of specialty wines, beers, and liquor. The business will operate Monday to Saturday from 11 to 8, although the applicant did mention that those hours are subject to change based on demand. And there will be three full-time employees, including the petitioner. We have a floor plan of that space. The petitioner did reach out recently to tell us that they no longer plan on dividing it into separate units, that they're just going to have one unit. I'll have the applicant confirm that, what their plan is for that. And here we have our applicable regulations for liquor stores. We did not receive any public comment. We do have the applicant here in person tonight. Do you have any questions for staff? All right, thank you.
Hey, I'm Ginger Contos. My address is 5439 Cottage Lane Hoover 35226. So a little history on the building itself. My granddaddy, from what my uncle told me, purchased this building in 1935. So it's been in my family for a long time. And this particular area that was on Lurleen Wallace, I'd actually considered demoing it. And then I had so much interest in renting it, I decided to shift. And so over the last year, I've held on to it. I was a recipient of the facelift Tuscaloosa. And I put on a roof. I've done the painting, got new windows and doors, but have since decided to maybe try this business opportunity. So liquor store, yes. But let me soften it with saying it's more of a beverage boutique. I only have 800 square feet that I'm going to be working out of. But just something that would be more along the lines of like top-shelf liquors, specialty wines, craft beers. There's a lot of foot traffic in that area, surrounded by the hotels and the law offices and new condominiums coming in next door. So just from a business standpoint, it looks like it could be favorable.
So will there be drinking on the premises? Or would it just be sales going out?
Sales only. Now, I, after talking to the ABC Board, obviously, I can't sell, I mean, like, open containers. But vendors could come in and do like tasting. So I will do that.
Any questions? All right, thank you so much.
Okay.
All right. We don't have anybody signed up to speak for or against this petition. Is there anybody in the audience that'd like to speak for this petition? Or against it? Or against her?
Just getting information. If you, Zach, can you pull up the site plan or the aerial? I guess I want clarification as to exactly which space we're talking about. That. Okay. So it fronts on Lurleen. My concern is Christ Episcopal Church is right there. So I just...
Okay, thank you.[1741.88] Okay, thank you.
What's the estimated feet from the church to the liquor store?
I'll, I'll do a quick measurement. About 160 feet.
Okay, thank you. So at this time, we'll close public comment, and we'll go to board comment, Ms. Holt.
So, question real quick. That, that is the, that is why we're voting on this, because it is within 1,000 feet of?
No, so it meets all of these regulations, so there's no variance request or anything associated with it. It's just a special exception in this district. So essentially, you guys can look at the character of the area to see if it's an appropriate use in this, in this specific location.
Okay, thank you. Sorry, I just want to clarify that. I have, I have no issues with this. I think that the owner has done some homework, and it seems like a decent fit for the area, so I have no issues.
I have no issues. I'm in favor.
I agree with my fellow board members. I think it'll be fit for the area, kind of downtown, walkable. It's going to be more upscale, not just a package store where we're taking out just anything, so I think it'll fit the area.
Yeah, I agree. It fits the area, and I haven't, I do not have an issue.
Agreed with my fellow board members.
Okay, at this time, we'll close board comment. I'll read the petition. ZBA-102-25, Ginger Katos, Katos? Katos petitions for a special exception to allow the operation of a liquor store at the property located at 589 Lurleen B Wallace Boulevard North, Zone D, Council District 4. Voting with Ms. Holt?
Yes.
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 Yes, yes.
Petition is approved.
All right, moving on to our short-term rentals tonight. This case should look familiar to some of you. ZBA-81-25, Stephen Friday petitions for a special exception to allow the short-term rental of a property located in 1985 Woodridge Road, Zone SFR-1, Council District 3. This did appear before you last month, and it was continued. Here we have an aerial view of the property. It's the Woodridge neighborhood, just north of McFarland Boulevard North. Here we have an aerial view of the property. And here we have short-term rentals in the area. Here we have a view of that property from the road, and the driveway, and the new driveway. This was continued for gravel driveway last month. They have appropriately surfaced it.
Looks good, too.
As you can see there. So as part of this request, Stephen Friday will be the primary contact and will be available 24 hours a day in case of an emergency. The petitioner has previously managed one short-term rental in the past. The house is equipped with security cameras and keypad locks, and it is owner occupied. The house has four bedrooms and two bathrooms. The petitioner is requesting eight adults and four vehicles. If approved, staff recommends eight and four. We do have the applicant here in person tonight. We did not receive any public comment. Do you have any questions for staff?
Show the aerial one more time.
Sure.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Friday?
I didn't hear what you said.
It looks so good.
I'm Stephen Friday, 1985 Woodridge Road. We're got the driveway done, like you asked, and that's my hardship now. So we're asking for 45 nights, eight adults, four cars. We have, you know, plenty of parking now.
Oh, yeah.
Hard services.
Only thing, it's your first year, it's probationary, so it's 30 nights.
Okay.
To ask, and so are you okay with that?
You always go for them.
Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Friday? All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
All right, don't have anybody signed up to speak for or against the petition? Is there anybody in the audience that'd like to speak for or against this petition? All right, we'll close public comment. We'll go to board comment, Ms. Holt.
Thank you for addressing the driveway. Looks nice. I have no issues with this. I'm in favor.
I have no issues. I'm in favor.
I agree with my fellow board members. I have no issue. It looks really nice.
I have no issues.
No issues.
Okay, at this time, we'll close board comment. I'll read the petition. ZBA-81-25, Stephen Friday petitions for a special exception to allow the short-term rental of a property located at 1985 Woodridge Road, Zone SFR-1, Council District 3. It was continued from September. Eight adults, four vehicles, 30 nights, one year probation. Voting with Ms. Holt?
Yes.
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 Yes, yes.
Petition is approved.
All right, ZBA-104-25, Kimberly Cooper petitions for a special exception to allow the short-term rental of a property located at 108 Springbrook, Zone SFR-2, Council District 7. Here we have a view of that property. You can see it's right off 82, nearby Buffalo Wild Wings, and an aerial of the property. Short-term rentals in the area, and a view from the street, and the driveway. As part of this request, Dolores Boyd will be the primary contact in case of emergency. The petitioner will also be available, but is located roughly three hours from the property. The petitioner has over eight years of experience managing short and long-term rentals. The house will be equipped with a remote keypad lock. It is not owner occupied and will be used as a second home for family and friends when not being rented short-term. The house has four bedrooms and two bathrooms. The petitioner is requesting 13 adults and four vehicles. If approved, staff recommends four adults and two vehicles based on the parking. We did not receive any public comment, and we should have the applicant here in person tonight. Do you have any questions for staff?
No questions.
Thank you.
All right, Ms. Cooper?
So we just had this property for a few years for my?
I'm sorry, give us your name and your address.
Sorry, Kimberly Cooper. It's actually Kimberly Schlotman now, because I got married. And we are trying to turn this property into an Airbnb, short-term rental. We'd had it for a few years for my niece to live in while she went to the university, and she has graduated and moved, so now we are just using it for a second home at this point and want to also rent it out.
Okay. So are you okay with the four and two suggested by the city?
For the number of people to live there or to stay there.
That's four adults. It doesn't count children.
Okay. Each of the bedrooms has, they're big bedrooms, so each of them have queen-sized beds in each one of them. So if we could do eight, because it would be two adults in each bedroom?
So what they look at is the parking?
Oh, gotcha.
The parking is, that's the issue. The driveway, I think engineering is saying only two cars can fit, because you can't have any parking on the street, so all of it has to be in the driveway.
Okay, because, well, the side, we usually park four cars there whenever they live there, on the drive, and then the side, there's actually room for two, but I don't know if y'all consider that?
Can't park in the grass, and then all, can't do that, like, now if you live there?
It's just gravel.
If you live there, you can do it, but?
Got it.
You can't do it when?
Long-term rental, you can park on the street. Short-term rental, you got to park in the driveway.
Yeah, it's, well, it's, it actually, if you see, there's the driveway, and then right beside it, that is a gravel area, and people do park, that's where we parked, was those two places.
So when engineered, they didn't see gravel?
They did not mention that in their assessment.
I mean, we have grass in the front. People park there too, but yeah, we just park in those two sections, but, okay. So we, we're fine with that.
All right.
If that's what we have to do for the two parks. So if we were to come back in and pave that side section there?
Yes.
Okay.
Do they need to adjust the curb cut, or all they have to do is pave?
Yeah, we can talk with you after that, after this meeting, about how to do that.
All right, that sounds good. All right, thank you. All right, thank you. You say your last new name is Schla?
Schlotman.
Schlotman, okay.
Let me spell it for you, because it's a whole mouthful.
Thank you. We don't have anybody signed up to speak for or against. Is there anybody in the audience that'd like to speak for or against this petition? At this time, we'll close public comment, and we will go to board comment.
I have no issues.
I have no issues. I'm in favor.
I'm in favor with the city's recommend, staff's recommendations.
Yes, I'm in favor of four and two as well, in favor.
Okay, at this time, I'd like to read the petition. ZBA-104-25, Kimberly Cooper petitions for a special exception to allow the short-term rental of a property located at 108 Springbrook, Zone SFR-2, Council District 7, with four adults, two vehicles, 30 nights, one year probation. Voting with Ms. Holt?
Yes.
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 Yes, yes.
All right, the petition is approved.
All right, moving on to our final case tonight, ZBA-105-25, Matt Moore petitions for a special exception to allow the short-term rental of a property located at 1718 8th Street, Zone SFR-3H, Council District 4. Here we have the zoning of that property. As you can see, it's directly off Queen City along 8th Street, and an aerial view of that property. And here we have short-term rentals in the area. Here's a view of that property from the street and the driveway.
Has this been approved in the past?
Yes, it has.
What was it approved for?
Mr. Pons.
I'll have to dig into it.
Okay, no problem.
So Matt Moore and Kim Van will be the primary contacts and will be available 24 hours a day in case of emergency. The petitioner has operated five to 10 short-term rentals in the Tuscaloosa area in the past. The house is equipped with an alarm system, and a list of rules will be provided to the renters prior to their arrival. The house is not owner occupied and will be used as a private home when not being rented short-term. The house has three bedrooms and three bathrooms. The petitioner is requesting four to six adults and two vehicles. If approved, staff recommends four adults and two vehicles based on the driveway. We did receive three public comments in opposition to this request. We do have the applicant here in person tonight. Do you have any questions for staff?
War and two was the previous approval.
Thank you. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Moore. Come on down.
Last but not least, right?
Sure.
I'm Matthew Moore. I'm a resident of Birmingham. We've had this property in a short-term rental program here in Tuscaloosa. Previously, we stopped doing it, I think, at the end of, or didn't renew at the beginning of '24, and just want to start doing it again. My sister lives here in Tuscaloosa, and we own the property together.
So she would be the contact, in local contact in town?
Well, she would be certainly the most immediate. She lives over in the Gildeswood area, so she's only five minutes away.
All right. Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Moore?
Thanks.
We don't have anybody signed up to speak for or against. Is there anybody in the audience that'd like to speak for or against this petition? Okay, we'll close public comment, and we'll go to board comment with Ms. Holt.
I have no issues, especially since it was approved previously.
I have no issues. I'm in favor.
I agree as well.
I'm in favor.
Okay. At this time, we'll close board comment. I'll read the petition. ZBA-104-25, Matt Moore petitions for a special exception to allow the short-term rental of a property located at 1718 8th Street, Zone SFR-3H, Council District 4. Four adults, two vehicles, 30 nights, one year. Voting with Ms. Holt?
Yes.
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 Yes, yes.
Petition is approved, and we are adjourned. Thank you. We vote on the calendar?